So, welcome Lydia Koo to The Weekly. I think we'd like to start where most of the discussions always start with development issues in Palo Alto. You have obviously been an outspoken, concerned about development kind of candidate now for both this campaign and the one two years ago. And I wonder, and you've been a participant on the Comprehensive Plan Revision Committee, I wonder if you could encapsulate in a short amount of time sort of what your views are on how far we should go to limit commercial and residential development right now and then what your vision is for the outcome of the Comprehensive Plan process in terms of those two development components.
In terms of limiting development, for the, the city council has already put in place the annual, annual office development limit. So I think it does require, it is necessary for it to continue. I understand it's supposed to expire next year. So I think that it does need to extend for a longer time, but also include, included so that becomes citywide and also to have Stanford Research Park to be a part of it as well. Doing it that way then we'd be able to kind of have a better understanding with creating a baseline and understanding our road capacity and really have factual data to show us where we need to resolve the traffic issues, how to resolve it, you know, but first creating that baseline. In terms of housing development, you know, most of the land is private, so a lot, so I would like to see more encouragement of housing. However, I don't want to see it to be developed in the same pace as what had happened in the last 10 years when they were building office space. It was, I think, it has to be paced a little bit better, but we do have to catch up. I don't think we can catch up all the way, you know, to have that balance, but there does need to have some, there does need to be some consideration so that there is housing being built, not to the same pace as what development for office space was.
And so what type of housing development would you support since there's such a range of where we could put our attention on and zone for?
It's, it's difficult to say because I'd love to see what below market rate housing, low income housing. I don't use the word affordable because now it seems the word affordable has so many different meanings for so many different people. But I would like to see our service, service workers in town have places to live in so that they don't have to drive too far. I've been talking with the seniors who live at Channing House and Webster House and the senior housing organizations, and a lot of them say that they have difficulty retaining their employees because it's difficult for them to come so far. So hopefully we can kind of think about that kind of a housing and encourage that sort of a housing for the lower income workers. Teachers is another place that we, is another group that I'd like to see housing built for, and hopefully, you know, the school district will take that into consideration as well and work together with the city in order to do something like that for the teachers.
So how as a council member would you actually put measures in place to get that type of housing as opposed to housing that would be unaffordable to those people? And are you speaking of rental or for sale housing?
You know, for rent would be preferable only simply because there's a circulation, you know, they can kind of, most of the time when I see people buy something, they tend to stay there longer because of the housing prices nowadays, they're so high that it's going to be difficult for them to find something else if they decide to sell. In terms of how to incentivize, you know, it's, that's a difficult thing to answer only simply because, you know, it's hard, you have, if it was below market rate, then we can kind of have an incentive or maybe push and invest, take a look at how we can increase the below market rate percentage from 15, similar to what San Francisco had done, you know, they've increased it to 25. But I'd like to also see, you know, when they increase it to 25, what are some of the impacts that might come out of that, you know? So I'd like to see some report and studies on that. And San Francisco would be a good one to look into what kind of experiences and consequences or ramifications they've discovered along the way.
So I'm still not clear on how you would actually achieve more below market rate housing, given the cost of land. You would, are you saying you would support the 25% requirement on developers, the increase from 15?
Yes, I would.
Okay.
I would, yes.
So you kind of condition that on studying it, but...
Oh, yeah, no, so, I'm sorry. So I would actually, I want to be able to first understand if there's any ramifications from increasing it, but I would support that greatly. That's the only way we're going to get below market rate housing for anybody here.
You and other candidates have talked about the idea of being able to create this baseline to assess the impact of development on retail and parks and traffic and all. So I want to get a little bit into that. What, what is the mechanism for identifying this baseline that we can then make decisions off of? How do you, how do you quantify all these different complex situations?
One by one, baby steps. No, but the main thing is, you know, tackling priorities, you know, setting a priority on where is the most, the area that has been most affected and based on what residents has been saying, you know, what has been affecting their quality of life. It all goes back to overdevelopment in office space and causing the rents to go high. The more desirable office spaces are, and when we convert retail and those spaces being taken up, then not, the conversion is illegal conversion, so, you know, somebody rents it out for, for, for office space. But a lot of it has to do with it becoming, the rents shooting up and it doesn't come back that fast down because the landlords are always trying to get a little bit higher. So in creating the baseline, based on what residents says, right now is the traffic and the parking situation. So I would like to, I would like to see factual analysis on what the traffic situation here is and also creating that baseline, like I said earlier. But also, a lot of it has to do with also Stanford cooperating as well. And, you know, while Stanford has a successful TDM, a lot of residents says that their traffic is actually, their parking is actually on our streets in the neighborhoods over here. So I would like to have factual information from conducted in order to kind of assess if, what can be, what can be, how we can resolve that together with Stanford, together with the businesses in that manner. As for, as for some of the code enforcements, I think that we have to push forward and enforce some of those close enforcements in order to be able to have the factual data to create that baseline.
Do you think this is something that city staff would be able to tackle, or are you in favor of hiring consultants to make studies?
I think I would, I would be in favor of hiring a consultant to do it.
So it seems to me that there's an underlying tension here between people in this community that believe there is a new trend in the way people are going to live and the use of their cars, they're going to depend more on public transportation, therefore parking is, is something that we need to not be overly zealous about providing and requiring in new residential development. And the tension is with those who believe that that really, there's no evidence that that actually would happen and that we need to stick very strictly with our parking requirements of new buildings and not do the type of building that's being proposed for El Camino and Page Mill, which is essentially being proposed as intentionally underparked. Can you describe how you would balance those two in terms of what your policies would be?
Like you said, it's, there's no evidence in the past 10 years, ever since the building has occurred or has been continuing the bridal growth, until there is some sort of evidence that, that the parking is not required, then we can scale back. But until then, I still believe that development should be fully parked. Additionally, we don't have the public transportation system in place. It's bigger than Palo Alto to provide. It's a regional effort, it's even perhaps a state effort that government should actually focus. If this is what they're looking for, you know, I mean, they understand that there's this growth that is happening and it's continuing, it's not diminishing at all, but to only push for building growth is not right when they're not balancing it with transportation, resolving transportation issues. So they have a hand in ensuring that we have viable public transportation as well. In terms of, you know, so my policy would basically be staying with what we have in place right now and ensuring that we do build enough parking for each development. Again, I haven't seen any, I mean, it's all unproven assumptions right now and it's very aspirational for me when people say that, you know, we'll have car free, car light and all that neat terms, but we just have to show that it's actually capable of doing it.
So as I understand it, you support the current 50,000 square foot cap, you want to expand it to include the entire city, including the research park. And that would be pending the approval of a new comprehensive plan, or would you envision that type of cap remaining after the adoption of the comprehensive plan?
I would envision that kind of a cap in place even after the comprehensive, comprehensive plan is in place.
And, and you believe that, that rate of allowable redevelopment, 50,000 square feet per year for the entire city is an appropriate level of growth? I mean, that's...
For office space.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
I think so. Because that 50,000 is just new space, right? New square footage of a building that is demolished. It's not so much, every building, every square footage is counted, it's just new square footage.
So some people would say that instead of having an office cap, you could have conditions such that every new development reduces traffic on the streets or that kind of thing, so there'd be sort of a trade off. I'm wondering what you think of office cap versus a conditioning, you know, of each new development.
And the reason I like office cap is because I don't have confidence that the conditions or the measurements will be actually looked at, will be actually followed through, you know, I mean, I don't have confidence in that.
What about the idea of putting in place penalties or, you know, one year afterwards check ins, things like that? Would you support it if there were those kinds of measures?
I'll have to see, yeah, I can't answer that. I have to take a look at it. I mean, one example would be Edgewood Plaza, right? So it has penalties involved, but there's still no operating grocery store over there. So I have to kind of, you know, it's, it's hard to, yeah, it's very hard to have confidence in something like conditions when we already have examples of failing enforcement.
Can you envision any circumstances where you would approve development, either commercial or residential, that was greater than the 50-foot height limit in Palo Alto?
Low income housing. I would consider that.
And how would you go about deciding what the right height would be for that type of a proposal? Someone came forward with a low income housing proposal?
Are you saying that in a building that, wait, I'm sorry, rephrase your question.
Can you foresee any circumstances when, where you would approve the construction of a building higher than 50 feet?
Oh, higher than 50 feet?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I thought you said 50, the cap, I'm sorry.
Oh, no.
Higher than 50, actually, right now I would say no because I can't envision that right now because we have sufficient, we haven't exhausted our supplies yet in terms of places which can go to 50 feet. So I don't see the necessity of approving a building at this point.
Well, the argument would be that if, if you can create a building that's higher and therefore more dense, you can bring down the cost of the units. And if there was a BMR, if it was a below market rate development, you then could offer more units of housing for more low income people.
It would have to offer quite a bit of BMR units in order for me to take that into consideration, I mean, in order to approve it. Additionally, taller and denser buildings, you know, we have to also consider parks and schools. So there's more than just building a building that's going to house people, there's also all the other impacts that it comes with. And so we have to consider whether the schools will be able to accommodate without stripping it and then how our infrastructure is going to do, what kind of traffic is it going to add.
Well, I did want to ask about TMAs. So we've got the Stanford, the Downtown, and then the Stanford Research Park TMAs. What's your estimation on how effectively TMAs could work in terms of reducing solo commuter traffic? What's your level of confidence in?
At this time, not very much. I think, you know, as I said earlier, Stanford University's on campus, it actually has, it does do what it's supposed to do on campus, but the thing is, we don't, we also know that when it's off the campus, there's a lot of impacts to the city itself. So I don't know how far the Research Parks TMA is coming along yet, but I do know Downtown's is, it's, the city gave it some funds, but I don't, I haven't seen it progress too much more than, than a group of people getting together to come up with different solutions, but I haven't seen it really move forward.
I want to ask you about the Downtown Residential Parking Program, which in your, in your survey response to the Palo Alto Neighborhood Association, you described that as a failure. And I wanted you to describe in what way is it a failure, in what ways you change it?
Well, I think that I was a little bit extreme in my writing about being a failure. It has successes, it does have successes because it does involve giving residents a chance to park on their own street, on their own block, and it doesn't have as much impact. However, the fact that the traffic, the parking is moving further out into the other neighborhoods is a concern. And then so the RPP is actually being extended to all these other neighborhoods. So how far does it go, you know? And I think that at some point, all of this are burdens on the residents. So the city needs to own up to this and actually build the garages. So I know in our infrastructure budget that is set for this, for these upcoming years, there's two garages that are being built, and I hope to see that there is the funds in there and that they're ready to go so that we can stop the expansion of the RPP areas. And another thing is also the RPP, you know, they're supposed to have evaluations at certain periods. And my understanding is that the reports that come back, at least Nielsen Buchanan, who kind of keeps me updated on all of that, it hasn't been up to par, it doesn't give the right data. So I think it needs to be better managed at that.
So the other thing that you've commented on at the, at the Comprehensive Plan Committee meetings is your preference for a more stringent approach to the residential parking program, such as you, the college terrace program has.
Yeah, yes.
Which the difference being that in the college terrace program, you cannot park in the neighborhood, there's no, there's no way for someone who isn't a resident to park there. Whereas obviously Downtown, we're providing limited, it's a mixed bag of both residents and employees. So as you look, you'll be on the council when, if you're, if you're elected, when RPPs are adopted presumably for both South Gate and for this California Avenue area of Evergreen Park. Will you be pushing for the college terrace model in adopting a program? Or will you be looking more at replicating, especially in the California Avenue area, the Downtown program so that employees have some opportunity to share the residential parking?
First, I want to again say that the city is responsible for the parking. If they allow developments to come, you know, it, it has to be balanced. Every time you develop, allow a development or approve a development, you have to ensure that it has the sufficient parking. And then two, would I be pushing for those programs? I won't be because I would hope that when staff goes out and conducts their community meetings, they would be actually asking the community what they would like to have in place. I did attend both South Gate as well as Evergreen's community part meeting, and at Evergreen, they never offered it. They never offered all the programs. They offered only Downtown's and that was it. They didn't offer college terrace nor even Crescent Parks. At the South Gate, I think they learned from that experience and I actually asked, and so they brought up the two other programs. So I'd like to see it offered, you know, so that people can have a choice, the residents can choose what they think that they want for their, for their neighborhood.
Well, wouldn't it be pretty obvious what the residents would want? I mean, why would a resident not want the college terrace approach?
Yeah.
So if that's the case, then, then what can you say to people in the business community that suggests that you will be balancing the needs of the business community with the residents? Or will you be?
Of course I will be. I mean, retail is, is very big, it's a community building effort and it also brings revenue to the city. So yes, I would like to see balance there, but, you know, at the same time, I think that our neighborhoods can't be fully, cannot take on this kind of a burden, you know, of constant workers parking on their streets and, you know, it's just not a healthy thing for a neighborhood. Again, I think that, you know, the city, if it wants a vibrant retail sector, it does have to be disciplined in funding for garages to ensure that there are space for that. You know, many of the cities now are also, are charging for parking, you know, that, you know, it's something to explore also. I'm not saying I'm supporting it or not, but it's something to explore. If we have a really vibrant California Avenue with a lot of retail, you know, that might be something that we might have to do.
So just to wrap this up, so in the Downtown program, would you support changing the program so that it was resident parking only?
Not, not right now. I mean...
Okay, so you're in support of this, of the phased concept here, which is a gradual reduction in the amount of permits available. So why wouldn't you, why wouldn't you support that then for the California Avenue area? Or would you? It's kind of the same problem, right?
For the California, well, I actually just, for the California Avenue, if they, if, I think that RPP from Downtown might be something that might work out there, but I just don't want it to encroach into Evergreen or into South Gate or into Ventura.
Well, but that's, that's where the neighborhood is.
The thing is, you know, I mean, we see how it is in Downtown already, the streets are very narrow and, and so just adding more, just, I want to be sure that we learn from what happened in Downtown and not to have the same thing over here.
It's too late though for that. I mean, the Evergreen Park neighborhood is already full of cars. So it's a matter of how do we, how do we get the cars out of there and at what, at what rate? But let's, let's move on to another question.
A girl can have hope.
Well, I wanted to address the question of regionalism because of course housing pressures are regional and people are commuting from South Gate to San Francisco and, and back and forth. Clearly, a regional solution is lacking at this point, and to what do you attribute this failure to collaborate amongst the cities and the failure to think ahead and to get ahead of these problems?
You know, big businesses are very, and having them in your town, it's, it's like a bragging right, you know, like Facebook is in Menlo Park and, and Google is over there at Mountain View. It's, it's great, but at the same time, you know, I don't think the cities are really kind of coming together to look at, to see how they can help each other or how their impacts are impacting quality of life, you know, for most of the residents. And I think that's a disconnect. And I think a lot of times that our state government, even federal government encourages it. At this point, you know, all, it's mostly about how to reduce greenhouse gases, you know, so have, live, live near work, don't go too far and et cetera. But again, back to regional transportation is not there. The infrastructure for the public transportation is not there. And until the state can find a way to have better transportation for, for, you know, the entire area, we're going to run into this. And the last thing I want, I want to see is for cities to start suing each other because of their impacts that's coming, coming into town.
As a council member, would you take any steps to increase collaboration with the surrounding cities?
I would love to. I don't, so not having been a council member, I don't know how that all works, right? But I've been, as a citizen, I've been in contact with other citizens from other cities, you know, mostly they're fighting their growth as well, so it's these grassroots organizations that I've been talking to. And so maybe from there, you know, we can kind of work more on collaboration, but right now it's just with citizen groups, it's not so much, and I have no idea how it works on the council level or on the...
Yeah. In terms of expanding the robustness of the public transit system, are you in favor of Measure B?
Actually, no.
Okay, come on, Sam.
Well, again, I don't have confidence in, in, in the proposal simply because my understanding is in the past, there was a measure, there was a tax that was put forth, and actually North County or Palo Alto just didn't get any of the funds, you know? So this time around, I'm hoping that we actually do get the funds if it passes, but it's, all of it just benefits San Jose mostly, you know, it really doesn't benefit this side. We're going to get some money towards great separation, but it's not enough for great separation, so I just don't have confidence that it's going to work out and it's another tax on us. There's, there's going to be a lot of financial burden. It's not just this tax, there are other taxes that are coming our way. So I just think there's a lot of financial burden that's placed on the residents in order to make all of these things happen. And I think it should be a government matter.
Well, I think with Measure B, there is some sort of cap on how much money is going to go to Bard and there's an agreement of, I forgot what percentage would come to local transportation.
There's about 400, 400 million that's going to be coming towards Palo Alto in order to be applied towards trenching or undergrounding from what I understand, you know, so...
It's not enough.
Not enough.
What regulation, if any, do you support surrounding Airbnb, people using their homes for short-term rentals?
I want to explore the one that San Francisco has. They have some, they have some regulation in terms of how short, I think one of them was being time period, so it can't be for a week or minimum is a month or something like that. So I'd like to explore that. But also, you know, my greatest fear with Airbnb is that it's within neighborhoods and we have children that are out and about all day and we have, so it lessens the community feel and assurance of safety. There are people just coming in and out, you know, for the Airbnbs. So essentially like a hotel within your neighborhood, except you have no idea who they are. So I think in that regard, I would like to, like to see some proposals in terms of how to make it safer. So one of them being that longer term stay, that might be something that might help in terms of working with...
So is this an issue that you think needs to be addressed?
Yes.
And is it purely a safety matter from your standpoint?
It's a safety matter, but then it's also housing that can be potentially available for people who are wishing to rent or, it's a housing issue also. There's just, it doesn't give anybody a chance to rent it for long-term and to be a part of the community.
What about parking in traffic?
For the Airbnb?
Yeah.
Oh.
Just giving you an opportunity to mention that if that's a concern.
It is a concern. I mean, so my thought is usually, you know, the houses or condos usually come with a parking space, you know? So it would have to be sufficient for whoever is gonna be renting the home, yeah.
Yep, or the closet or bedroom or whatever.
One, no. That's why we need regulations on that.
Okay, we should zip through a few questions here fast.
Sure. Buena Vista Mobile Home Park, do you support the spending of, sorry, public funds on preservation? As it is, do you support turning it into some sort of other low-income housing? Or do you not support any public funds being spent?
The first one that you said.
Preservation of the Mobile Home Parks.
So the, the current direction that the policy has chosen to go.
Right.
Yeah. On the Edgewood Plaza grocery store problem, the council, I guess tonight, is gonna be considering-
It's gonna be later.
So the, the council is soon gonna be considering increasing the penalties against the developer for failing to have an open grocery store. Would you support that?
I would support that. And I would add on to that, that they should look into whether, since the developer builds a lot in Palo Alto, that they should not approve any of his other projects.
Blanket?
Just to San Hill.
Right, well, yeah, that's what I mean.
When you say blanket, what do you mean?
You would just, you would just refuse to consider any of his, any other proposal?
It's a track record that we're working on, right? And if his track record is that we can't trust his word on actually providing a grocery, operating grocery store at Edgewood Plaza, being that is part of the public benefit, then we should, we should hold off on approving any of his other projects.
So we're not approving any PCs at this point. And so any of his other projects are projects that meet the zoning or you can deny the zoning change. But are you saying that you would attempt to not give a building permit to a project that he was proposing doing as sort of a punishment or a fine for what's going on at Edgewood Plaza?
It's an incentive.
But that's what you're saying, is that you would deny him the ability to do any other-
If I can do that legally, yes.
Okay.
There've been a number of appeals of architectural approvals recently. 427 University is one of those appeals that's been ongoing for a while. That particular project fits within objective architectural guidelines, but there's this subjective issue that's been debated back and forth. If you're on the council, how would you handle 427 University?
You know, I think that on that one, you know, the, I think neighbors who are looking at it really have something to say. So I would actually wanna, want their thoughts and really wanna hear theirs.
Yeah, and even more than their thoughts, their feeling. You know, is there a limit to that, I guess, is one question?
I think there is a limit to that. And, you know, I, at this point, I really think that, you know, it does have to move forward. But at the same time, I do hear what the neighbors are saying. So I, I don't have a good answer for that one.
If you're elected, you will probably be part of a city council that will hire the new, a new city manager. City manager Jim Keen is gonna be approaching his 10th year. It's likely that certainly within your term, it's not unlikely that he will retire. If that's the case, what, what would you be looking for in a new city manager that differs from what his leadership has, has consisted of?
Somebody who actually also looks, you know, as a city manager, there's so many jobs that they have to, I mean, so many areas they have to be fluid at. And so I think that, you know, I think Mr. Keen actually has been very focused on economic. Well, when he came in, we did have that depression and so he worked very hard at that. Did a very good job bringing us back. But then it'd be somebody, I wanna see the balance, you know? He was very strong in bringing our city back so that there is some economic resurgence. But then the thing is, I'd like to see on the other end of it, where is the residents? How are their quality of life? And also a focus on what we always say, you know, we have an aging population. There hasn't been too much done about that either. So I'd like to see balance from somebody who's gonna come in after the city manager.
And when you say the aging population, can you expand on what you have in mind there? In terms of, you're talking about additional city services for seniors or what exactly do you mean?
Well, I'd like to see, yeah, community centers, not just in the north side. So Avenida is just on the north side. I'd like to see one at the south, in South Palo Alto. I'd like to see programs-
Would you want the city to pay for that?
Well, yeah, I would like to see that the city has a hand in that.
I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
I was gonna say that, you know, even it out so that what is available at the north Palo Alto is also available at south Palo Alto. For example, more, I'd love to see a larger community center in the southern part. Also, we're gunning, because I'd like to see the kids over there have some, someplace to go so that they're, they don't have to traverse all the way to Mitchell Park or to downtown in order to hang out at the library or the community center. I think it, just basically balancing.
So getting back to the hiring of a new city manager, that's how this came up. You'd like to see a new city manager that, that put more attention toward looking at these kinds of, of services that-
It would be mostly enhancing also the quality of life for the residents here in Palo Alto.
Several city departments have reported that they're having a hard time recruiting and retaining employees. The most recent vacancy at the head of the utilities department's been, it took nine months to get someone who was in fact in-house. So at the same time, the city's facing some huge pension liabilities. So what ideas do you have for the city to improve on how it recruits and retains employees? Given that higher salaries may not be the best option?
I think, you know, there's, there are certain specific jobs that does require employees to perform because they, they have that continuation that they can take on from year to year. But then there's also certain jobs that can be outsourced. And I think that that might be a way to go in order to, one, to fund the pension plan and then two, you know, the fact that we have difficulty retaining employees. So I think again, you know, that's something to explore also. Certain jobs which can be outsourced to be outsourced.
So possibly shrinking the overall staff with some counselors?
Possibly, yeah.
All right, well, I think we're out of time. Lydia Kue, thank you very much.